A little bit of stuff so that by the time they come, hopefully we're into next piece. So, for the sake of timeliness, it's one o'clock and we'll start this month's Child and Youth Services Committee meeting, and we'll go around the room. Chris Rogers, County Board.
Mary Borison, County Board.
Pam Murphy, County Administration.
Constance Myerendorf, Clerk's Office.
Mark LaFleur, Youth Center.
Brad Alexander, Douglas County Youth Center.
Okay, Brad, let's go with you all. I gave you all that, for the record. Example of adult corrections, not exactly if you like that, but they set some numbers off of key programs, and I don't know, since that mental health discussions come up topic, you see what some of the stuff they did, and so they give you a basis, at least that version is used to be an adjust- adjusted, digested, so that might be good in that respect. With that, I'll turn over to you all.
Following this morning, we don't have a whole lot.
Yeah, I told them I pre-guys.
One thing Commissioner Do- I thought he was gonna be here, he had asked before the board meeting this morning, and he brought it up one other time, but he was asking us about creating a foundation at the youth center, and I honestly am, I don't know a whole lot about those.
He wants to, and I had this conversation with, based on a conversation that he had with me, his, a lot of his talk is about this, about a joint building, about a building, a new all-in-one center, and I told him that we probably might have to talk about that, and I told him basically I'm gonna put it in the room today again, and it's probably gonna be a break of items, and Jerry knows, he's got some stuff, so that conversation's about the starting of some respect. I think that's what he, he wanted the foundation to help some support for another site, which I don't know if that site is actually ideal, based on what's there.
Site for?
This all-in-one youths. It's basically a discussion about the judge triggered this, and you're not gonna fit seven judges, so the possibility is a Monoma County type deal. And there's some, some drawings or some space layouts that public properties has, that you can have that all over there where you all are around now.
And just build on to the...
Yeah, well, I don't know if they'll, they may just be a whole new building in some respects with you all there, I think that has to be talked about, but you're not gonna take you all and move you all over here, that's definitely not gonna happen, and, and the rationale of having another facility there without you all close undermines the savings from transportation, everything else, so that, that's kind of the whole deal. So, that, that's what he was.
And also, because when we do the United Way Drive thing, we have Douglas County foundations, like the female health one, the long-term care one, that he wants Douglas County employees to be able to have more options in Douglas County to give to, rather than just giving it to the United Way, if there's a drive. So, setting up a foundation, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty easy, but yet there's a lot of legalities to it, so we would just need to, like Chris Jerome, from the, he's on the city council, but he has assisted us at the region putting one together, so we could look for that. I mean, you just have to get a board, you have to do articles of incorporation, you know, file all the papers with the state, appoint board, a board, and it could be internal people and external people, but it's pretty easy to do, and if you wanna have that conversation, we can go ahead and start the conversation that happened, 'cause I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, that's up to you guys, if you, if you see the value in it, and if we want us to proceed, we'll certainly be delighted with it.
Okay.
The other, what?
The other?
Sorry. The other thing is, is we have, you know, we're going through the process of becoming a creative compliant, and so the restriction that we're struggling with the most has to do with that one to eight staffing ratio, and so there was, the numbers seem to be cooperating, and now they're not. We're struggling, the overtime is starting to climb, because if we go over eight, we have to put two people on the unit, so it's, I'm not quite sure what the answer is, but I mean, we've talked about maybe another location for staff secure. You know, I have some concerns in that regard, but I'm afraid it might be coming to that. I mean, we might want to move those conversations along a little quicker, and, and see where that goes, and where those kids might end up, because for us, we want them to continue to be connected to their home schools, and have the family nearby and those sort of things. Yep, those things are important to us, but we're really, really struggling with that ratio. We went from, we went from a hundred and twenty secure beds, just like that, to eighty. So our capacity right now is actually eighty beds, secure beds, and we have ninety kids in there today, ninety-three yesterday.
Are there folks out there saying, "We'll take staff secure, we'll take staff secure"?
No, because unfortunately, the kids that, that we end up seeing are the kids that are being asked to leave other places.
We must be what?
They're getting tossed, or they're, they're running, they find them, they don't-
Behaviors, aggressive.
They don't, they don't go back, they're, they're being aggressive with the other facilities, and ask, and ask to leave, so they come to us.
Thank you.
Yeah, rather de facto.
But they think they can get out, they, they stay, 'cause somewhere in there is supposed to be a place that's like a trap door, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's ridiculous, yeah.
So what you're saying, 'cause there's a place, the possibility, I mean, the-
We could convert that area back to secure very easily. We actually, when we changed the locks on the doors, I mean, we kept the old locks and did all that stuff, so it wouldn't, I don't even think there'd be much of, in the way of an expense in terms of swapping all that stuff out and turning it back into a secure area. And then we would have, our capacity would be ninety-six secure beds.
The, the old NCAP were adult community practices, would be that's an option if they, you know, entertain?
Where, where we are currently, the only place that we have a contract with for staff secure is Sarpy, so consequently, if we don't have a, a place, our, the folks have to go to Portal Road.
And, and quite honestly, it's, it's going to rest with probation, because almost, from a fiscal standpoint, you're not gonna be paying for those kids to go to these other places. It's not going to, that's not, that responsibility will not rest with the county, it's almost, without exception, all of those kids are probation responsibility.
To pay for them to go wherever, if a new, if a new staff secure goes?
Yep.
And it's who, it's their responsibility to determine the place?
Determine where they go and, and to pay for it, yeah.
As an option for secure, as, as a staff secure option?
Correct.
But if you, if, say you were to do this other thing off-site somewhere, would they have to pay them to get in there, or you?
They're, they're paying for our kids.
Oh, they're paying, oh, alright.
Yeah.
I mean, I can, I can approach them on that conversation if you want.
I think it's gonna have to have, we've had, we had one meeting to discuss the future of staff secure, and, I don't know, hopefully this is just kind of a lip, but it'll, it'll come back down again, but it's at least enough reason to be concerned.
Okay. Does, I mean, does the board want me to inquire?
What's the admission to that again, how many kids are we talking, eight?
About twenty.
We have a capacity for twenty-four in staff secure.
But the, but the, it's never, it's never twenty-two, it's almost like eight, ten?
Uh, ten today, we averaged ten in two thousand sixteen.
Okay, so, and this would be, we would, it would be similar to, it wouldn't be a contract with us anymore?
No.
It would be probation, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, if we chose to, to walk away from staff secure, I mean, obviously we would try to help them to the extent we could, but it's going to be their responsibility to find where these kids can go, and of course, then they would have to pay for that as well.
So you're saying if we moved it off-site, it wouldn't be us finding it off-site?
We don't have to do this.
We would do, oh.
We don't have to.
You'd have to find an entity that wants to do-
Probation has to.
Yeah, just wouldn't, we would just-
Probation has to. Yes, they are probation, those kids are responsibility probation. They are, yeah.
Is there any place else to go?
Just Sarpy for us, at this juncture. I guess it's possible, if it's a young lady, it might be you to Holly, or maybe Youth Links.
Youth Links was the one we had before.
I don't think they even have a position.
And then we used, we used Sarpy County for a while before, leading up to twenty thirteen.
Right, after the contract with Youth Links was mixed by the board, they, there was nothing, and then that's when the conversation with Sarpy started, and that was kind of an interim again until we had a real conversation of us doing it, and then when we started to do it, everything else was, you know, gone, but now the question is whether or not that staff, if we should continue to be doing staff secure, and if the answer is no, then the other question is, are there places out there for these kids to go?
Right, exactly, and ultimately, that is probation's responsibility.
It's probation, that's right.
Is first place you've had, we've had this discussion, I mean, like, like, like you're having it now?
I, I brought it up here prior, just to the extent that I was concerned when our, the ratio went from one to twelve to one to eight, and whether or not we might have to spread the kids out, and the only way we can do that is to open up some more units, but we only have so many, and a part of that conversation has got to be that staff secure area.
So basically, it's gotta be a bigger discussion with all these entities that may be affected, no?
Certainly with probation, but, but, I mean, the decision is ours.
Right, our decision is, do we wanna keep doing it or not?
Right.
And it's probation's then responsibility-
Exactly.
-to, we would work with them, obviously, you know, to give them information, but it's probation's responsibility to place them then.
Correct.
So they, because the law changed, there's not, if, if we shut down, there's not an option, they have to find somewhere, something has to be created, they can be-
Mary Vice had told me they'd be fine.
Oh, really?
She said that.
And, and this, keeping into account that we're not even really accepting any other youth from other counties, I mean, we, we haven't been able to do that for, going on four weeks now.
At least.
So, and, so otherwise, we, we typically will have-
We haven't asked anybody to come get them, we still have two kids right now from other counties.
So can we, can we invite her next month, just to have a discussion within the room, one hard time before this final call?
Or even in between then, just, you know.
Okay.
Have a meeting with her, her office, mine, yours, wherever you wanna be.
Let's do that. So if, I'm saying if that happens, capacity goes to ninety-six overall?
That would be it.
Absolutely.
That's true. Alright.
How does, how does that affect the staffing, is there anything?
Well, that's, that's another part of my concern, is when I wrote my budget for the upcoming fiscal year, based on what we'd seen, you know, at that time, I thought we were gonna be fine, I didn't adjust overtime, I thought we were gonna be good, we didn't increase staff, we had enough staff for all the units, and as long as we kept the numbers between eight on each unit, we're gonna be fine, but when we go above eight, and we're forced to have to place another officer on that unit, yeah, that's, that's, it will help if we have that space available over in the staff-
If you get rid of staff secure-
That helps.
Would that mean fewer employees?
No, no, we'd still have to, we've got staff over there now, and we would be taking some of the kids, we would be reclassifying some of the kids, and to help us to meet that one-to-eight staffing ratio.
Okay. Anybody else? Sean, I think she told Patrick, she, she's out today at Bob's at the VA for some treatment issue, so she's not here, and-
One question that I meant to ask at the board meeting about that was, the home program and the referrals from Jack, has there been discussion about having them increase those referrals, or is that just not a conversation that's happening?
No, we've had that conversation.
Is this a thing that Circavitz was uncomfortable with?
Um, no, that was actually Epic.
I thought it was them getting a home without due process.
Yeah, that was, that was-
Because they were getting there.
Yeah, that was part of her concern at that OIS meeting that we had at UNL that day.
Well, I mean, the group decided to move forward, it, I'm just wondering, is this the same thing, because the group, the group OIS was saying, "Yeah, we should do it," because there was, it was considered to be like one judge's individual opinion, some of them didn't see a thing with it, and I'm just wondering, is this the same thing?
I'm not-
Kids getting referred to home from the Jack, 'cause it, it was an epic, I remember specifically, it was this due process argument about them getting referred to-
I think it was evening reporting.
Uh-uh, I know it was evening.
Okay, then it would've been us.
But when Judge Johnson was at the meeting, that's, he said good, right?
Yeah, and then more kids were, that's why, I'm just saying, 'cause more-
We got two kids from the Jack in two thousand sixteen.
The point was that more, more kids were gonna get, started, uh, it was gonna get used, put more people back on, that's why I'm bringing up to make sure we know it's the same thing.
Right, but if we've only gotten two, it's not happening.
Yeah, we're, we're not getting youth.
Yeah, and, and they're available to take the kids into Epic as well, and they're not, you know.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're available, we've been available to take these students from Epic, I mean, the Epic program can have fifteen, and we currently have eight, and we know we've peaked at eleven, so, I mean, there's, there's certainly room for some folks as far as receiving those types of services for the evening reporting.
Well, and that's, I think, a bigger conversation with the Jack at some point, that I think it's too, the decision-making of where kids go is too tight, is too limited, and that needs to open up a little bit for discussion, because there's a lot of programs, just, you just named two, and I know three others, that are willing to take kids and they're not getting kids.
Sure, and especially if Sherwood, if this grant cycle, if they award us funding for the day reporting, you know, that, that adds-
We're not in charge of it.
That's adds another le- level of services.
What's the discussion, discussion of where kids go, I missed that.
Oh, with regards-
Cause it was just saying home program, you were saying another bigger deal, so what is, what is that?
Oh, regarding the home program, or the, the Epic day reporting?
Yeah, it's just, it's the biggest, bigger discussion, home program, I'm trying to clarify.
Oh, from the Jack, uh-huh, getting the referrals, getting youth into programs that benefit them, that's, that's the, the challenge, as Brad said, we only received a couple of youth from diversion, and that was in the home program.
So basically, you wanna have explained, I don't know how, she basically had to explain.
Well, I, you know, we've, we've, we had the Epic staff meet with Sean to go over the process of getting youth in the program, so at, at the very least, we're, we're having, we've had an initial conversation.
No, I don't dispute that, that's one, that's one thing that she needs to come to the meeting, because there's, there's opinion on it, but my understanding is the placement's not happening without some other assessment, so I figured she had to come to the meeting and explain it and get a feel for it.
There you go.
Alright, for next month's meeting, okay. Like I say, it's probably gonna be short today, since you all cleared everything out early, other than that, the only piece I need to put on stage today, as I said earlier, is Jerry's done some of this secretly for me, but now, this discussion of the seven-judge piece, probably gonna put it back in the room next month as a regular piece of the meeting to start this discussion about a one-stop-campus field, like Monoma County, went to that JDI meeting, he's got some preliminary numbers that we've done-
Fantastic.
And he's got somebody that can help us probably do some drawing up, and I think being the only question, is it becomes a finance discussion about, how do you do it, bond capacity, do you use the same vehicle that was used by Goodwill that was bonded, but it wasn't a public bond, so, just saying everybody, that's, that's where discussion's gonna go.
And just to piggyback on that, I mean, we've been talking about this for years, a juvenile justice center to us makes sense, at that location on Forty Second, especially even more so now, because of the addition of the judge, or potentially more judges in the next couple of years, so instead of the sixth floor being redone and redone, and people displaced, and then displaced again, it's time to lay that on the table and have the discussion, and from, I mean, I know maybe not all board members agree, but there's a majority that agree that the Forty Second and Woolworth location would be ideal for a juvenile justice center, and so now is the time for us to put it on the table and start putting number crunching and ideas.
Yeah, I agree, and maybe there should be a component for mental health, too, because it's such a big problem, you know, while we're, while we're going for it, we should go for something that really works for us, maybe a, you know, just need a ten-bed or fifteen-bed mental health hospital, I don't know, something.
The other piece to bring in the room now, and I told you I need to wait, is this NFC is talking about funds, so, so the Ross Family Collaborative, so it, it would be logical that if, you know, we're on the business, that that's a possibility, and it probably-
Are they, what are they, private corporation?
Contracted by the state to do case management.
What do we want them involved in?
Um, they're looking for a new bill, so, you know, a lot of those kids are in the crossover round to some degree, and they don't, we don't officially deal with, but it's fair to say that they have the court system, if you have that piece there, you have the tie, you have the dialogue, you have the, the attorneys there, and it, you know, it's a fair discussion to have, it's, it's, it would be their decision, it would be our decision, but it's a, it would be a good, good change, so, yeah.
I was gonna ask for Brad leaves, how long, how long did you think we should have that kind of an update from me, I heard what you said, I mean, you think once-
Um, I just-
Every other month?
I'm just telling you, I think it's gotta happen once a month, it won't be like that, I, I just gave them corrections piece to get an idea, but you can't, you can't think strategic unless you get it once a month, and you need to see these numbers and how they play, so.
Yeah, they just do some other version and work with Chris and Mary.
It won't be, it won't be like that, and even monthly, I mean, the trends start to kind of show themselves over time, so you're just gonna have to hopefully be patient, because there's gonna be some months where the change isn't gonna be, appear to be too terribly significant, but over time, it should start informing us, yeah.
And then the other thing we should maybe do, and it's probably a bad idea, but, you know, maybe if you think it's ever appropriate that three of us come there, do a walkthrough, or anything you ever wanna show us, participate in, you might let, you know, three of us know, and pick out three different ones, some of us don't go along with each other. Well, I have a problem with one of the ladies on our board, oh, there's only one. No, but whenever you want, if we can be helpful, I mean, and you come out there, if you say, "Hey, we've got something going on with a little bit of a graduation or something," then-
Yes, yeah, that would be awesome.
That'd be nice, to come by for that half hour.
Yep, now you would enjoy that.
We go to other places, so, as I said, it may not be a good idea, but you decide that, Brad.
Okay, no, I think, yeah, I think there'd be a lot of merit to that.
Well, um, come on, uh-
Just one last thing, tell me, tell us since we're here, a little bit more about how to adopt a unit?
So Greg Hepburn, he's the one that does the pledge for peace.
Yeah.
He coordinates the community partners that come out, we put together the, the list of kids that have met certain criteria, and then people come in and sit down and have a bite to eat, and talk to them, it's like about an hour, right?
Yeah, about an hour, the whole point is, we, we used to ask, our encouragement to get students to earn a credit during the course of the month, so that's the initial category, if you've earned a credit, or if, if a youth has an IEP, and they've, and they were working on their accommodation, that could be another pathway, but the, the whole emphasis is to recognize the students that have done well, and to let them know that it's appreciated, the job that they're doing, so it's kind of our at-a-boy, at-a-girl, pat on the back, and the, and, you know, the students, of course, they have their lunch, but we, we add a layer of the pizza, or, you know, juice or soda, wherever the case may be, as a way to recognize them, and to fellowship with those that are coming, to say, "Good job."
And you do it first?
We do it the first Friday of each month, and it's coordinated, Nancy King is the coordinator, the volunteer coordinator, but Greg Hepburn, he, we, we actually have folks that are slated for, some are slated for the whole entire year, some are slated for a couple of months at a time, but he has a schedule for each unit, and we, we can let you know when the next available position is.
Okay, yeah, I think I heard the board would be interested, I think I heard that today.
The other thing I could ask is, Tom Hosberg's group in this and all, or any other mentoring local?
The, not the teammates.
Released ministries.
Why is that?
Cause teammates is a after-school mentoring program, so, but, but there is some options in play, there was a, I mean, I can, I can have them come and explain to you, I think you probably need to understand that.
Sure.
Not them, but there's a, there's, there's some community-based aid money that goes, they've got some kids, I don't know if they're directly out of detention, but they, you know, it was, Kim Cope started it, it's been continued, this term called youth initiated mentor, and they're specifically trying to target kids in our juvenile justice system, so there's a, there's an option for that victim, I can have them, I can have them explain to you.
And, and, and we've done some of that through Midlands, mentoring and partnership, and we've, over the course of, started in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, where they've identified some youth that was mentored, needed that youth initiated, and the focus was identifying someone in their family, or someone they already had a connection with, and we were able to facilitate that, so we're, we're, we're very much in support of that initiative.
And I just say that because they, they're getting the National Disstudy done now, and they're about to have some data, and at least some preliminary data, I've seen from it, most positive, and I don't know if you are restricting the family, but the objective is, Mike, is, which I, I wholeheartedly agree, it's, it's kinda hard to just, you know, you get a kid, try to patch them up with somebody, they may not have a pool for it, this way the kid says, you know, "I've seen PJ Morgan, I like him, PJ already-"
Don't say that.
PJ already, he already has a path in, he's a tool.
And he say you don't like him.
And that's half the battle with the kid, I mean, and I think it's, it would be-
That's why I sat over here, so I could watch it.
I'm gonna ask, do you have any, any Mexican organizations, like our Lady Guadalupe Church, or any of the, what is it, the group, Friends of Our Neighbors, or whatever it is in South Omaha, do you have any of those people involved, I mean, there's a lot of activists down there, and they're really keyed up over immigration issues, and they may want, they may be willing to get involved, Spanish speaking.
You know, we, we reached out to Father Damian over at Guadalupe, and we're also, we've got a tentative meeting set up with Mr. Vargas, and I, I don't remember-
Senator Vargas, Tony?
Uh, no, it's not him, it's the gentleman that took over, that was the former Chicano Awareness Center.
Oh.
Uh, but we, we have a meeting set up with them, and, uh, it's about half a dozen of Hispanic leaders in South Omaha, week after next, to talk about how to move forward and, and how to get more involvement to assist our youth of Hispanic descent.
Other, Damian's moved to Francisco Breeney.
Oh, right, yeah.
But, and I'd be glad to get you the names, I'm thinking of two organizations that are slowly escaping my brain, they're both very positive people, particularly in immigration work, and I'll have, I'll get you their names and contacts, I've got it in my phone, but I'll send them to your email.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, great.
Well, you can just text them to get the share.
What's that?
You know, use this, I'm just saying, use share button, the share button.
I don't even, I don't have your cellphone though, I, can you do cellphone to cellphone, or cellphone to email?
You can do text to text, yeah.
Really, I'll call you, I'll show me. I'm one in every crowd.
And the, well, I'm kind of on that, but a little bit different, is, we've talked about it before, but the, having a foster grandparent, from the foster grandparent program, if you think that that would be feasible, or to the advantage to try to get somebody again, I can work with the Office on Aging program to get somebody, because I'll never forget that little grandma coming up to our meeting and talking about actually what she was getting out of it, out of the program, and the kids were getting just a- And the kids were getting just as much, but that was the point, is that we still have some of our older Americans here that want to do and give. And this may be a prime.
Getting the right person is just key and when it happens, it's really.
Well, let me talk to them and see if maybe we can get a discussion going again on that program because that was just very cool.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, keep up the good work.
Appreciate it, thank you.
It's sad to see, uh, the parents not visiting like that, that sixty percent that was in your report. You know, what a difference it makes that if you just care.
All right.
And, and that's the neat thing about having that family engagement liaison, because, I mean, she is just the dearest, kindest, sweetest person. Ex-principal, uh, assistant principal over at Northwest High School and, uh, she is, I mean, she calls every parent of every youth that comes in. And sends out brochures, sends out information for the help line, sends out, uh, when the visits are, if they need any help, if they have questions about where their case is at. She directs them to the public defender so they can get their questions asked and just parents, they're so appreciative of that level of sensitivity. That, you know, they come to visitation, they ask about, you know, how can they be involved, so, uh, it, it's really key to meet the parents where they're at. And, and, and we're, we're really fortunate to have someone that does an excellent job doing that.
It'd be hard to ever get the parents to come do kind of a briefing without the children there, but just the parents, it's hard to get them all together and through you to talk about the importance of it.
Yes.
Wouldn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it would be a challenge.
Is there anything you can do, you talked earlier about the hours, sometimes it's hard to get the parents because of hours and a lot of parents have, one job starts.
Absolutely.
And is there, there's nothing you can do to finesse that a little bit or?
Every single time, that's a part of the conversation they have when they call home, if you can't come up, why, if it's a scheduling issue, Rondi, you know, Rondi.
Yeah, let me ask you a question, I don't mean to be brutal about this, but if you have parents who aren't showing up, I mean, if their attitude is pretty bad, I mean, isn't time for. I mean, if the kids aren't too old, Child Protective Services or somebody, I mean, you know, several.
We don't have enough information, well, I said, we don't have enough information at that point to probably make that kind of call, but.
Well, I mean, it sounds like they're kinda doomed if they want to show up and, and particularly when you're willing to let them in at any hour, you know.
It's, uh.
It concerns me a lot.
It concerns me though that getting Child Protective Services involved, well, then they're deeper in the system.
I know that, I'm just, I'm thinking of somebody to get somebody involved.
I know, maybe that's what we do.
Is there any youth centers?
Find the person.
Is it a national trend that you see that?
Yeah, we're not, we're not alone on that, I don't know that anyone's ever tracked that number.
Come up with a good remedy, like what Mike, Mary Ann think about?
I, I think, you know, we saw the, the family visitation increased forty-one percent from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen.
That's good.
And I think we were, it had to do with us reaching out to the families and making them feel comfortable and aware.
When you reach out, is it by letter or call?
Phone call.
Great.
There's a national lot of that, that's, that's probably all individual.
You know, and the other thing you could, I mean, I'm not trying to tell you how you call, but, you know, if I was calling you up and saying, hey, Brad. You know, we have your child here and I just want you to know the difference, and even though you may have some reservations, the difference you can make. By coming here and we see it day after day, the result of getting a parent involved, where they just care and if there's a way for us to meet you. Have you come out for a half hour, I know it'd help so much for his future or her future. Is there a way you could find time to do that?
Yeah.
Really appreciate, I mean, really vague and almost.
Yeah, we've, uh.
That's the kind of pledge I do when I'm trying to sell Mike the house.
There's all five houses, one of them's underwater.
He doesn't even live in any of them.
I'm still paying all of them too, twenty-two percent interest is the lowest.
No, I loaded the eighteen.
Oh, my God, thanks, I didn't know that, bonus time, do you, uh, get boys and girls clubs involved too?
Oh, yes.
Well, you, I mean, and you've covered all the ground, I mean, it, it's incredible.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're pretty fortunate, we really have worked hard to try and understand the mental health issues. Uh, having the multidisciplinary treatment team that meets weekly has really been key to understanding what some of the crises are for some of our young people. Uh, we still have a psychiatric need, uh, you know, we, we're just in a position where, you know, we have a psychologist, we have L M H Ps, but we need a psychiatrist. So they're getting the proper medications that, that they need.
You can't use anybody from, uh.
Everybody needs a psych.
The hospital?
Uh, unfortunately, no, but they're, we're, we're looking for solutions to address that, so there's, you know, there's some things that we're, we're looking at.
Well, keep this posted.
We will, thank you.
And I have to wait till the meeting's over, I can take you.
Well, and this may be, you know, again, we've talked about it a lot, but telemedicine, that may be, um, a piece to at least get that, um, psychiatrist piece in there. If last resort, but could potentially.
Sure, well, that psychiatrist we need for the M A Ts and, uh, we also need to increase, uh, get the evaluations done. The psychiatric evals, if there's a way that we could cut those days in half, that means, uh, students will be going from sixty, instead of being in the youth center, uh, sixty days to thirty. Or instead of ninety to forty-five, and when you look at the number of days that could ultimately save, uh, having that, uh, psychiatric group who can do those psychiatric evals would really be a big plus. If that could happen.
We have to leave, PJ and I are in a void in turn.
Good luck.
Thanks a lot, guys, thanks everybody.
Isn't that the issue at one time, is this, is this have something to do with the state?
Well, the court order and evaluations.
Yeah, our supervisory.
And so, uh, uh, at one point did we not, because this was happening, we, we had actually somebody placed in the youth center? Or am I thinking of something else?
You're thinking of Frank Keatley with H H S, I think, and, and we gave him an office to work out of.
And that do star.
He was an intake officer at the time, I think, no, he was with H H S. But he had something to do with placements and it was when H H S was more involved with our population.
But this is, this is, but my understanding with this, this is even getting somebody to turn the evaluation around quick enough to do it.
That's the big issue, probation, just to have enough contracted psychiatrists and that's why, uh, the, I mean, that's, our dates are creeping up. And, and that's a big reason why.
Well, see, that's, see, those are the issues though, that I think we need to bring now.
That's the conversation that I would, cause I'm confused and Pat, you all might have to find some more information to clear this up. Cause this conversation happened in another setting I was in, no matter the fact it was the juvenile justice provider form. And they were trying to get some feedback on it and this assessment kind of came up, but somebody mentioned Boys Town, I know we got a contract with Boys Town.
We do.
But I don't know how that works, if they're just overflowed, that they don't have the capacity to do it or what? Because somebody brought that up, like they should be able to step in and I don't have enough information.
The contract is actually between Boys Town and probation, we just provide a space for them to come up and, and do some of the evaluations that can take place at the youth center.
And they're not doing that?
No, we're, we're.
I don't think it's happening.
But not in a timely manner?
No, it's, it's, it's taken a long time, now, we have a, uh, we have the, a psychologist that's there at the youth center. And, and a way to get some of the youth moved up, some of the other evals, uh, he's, he's been doing and the L M H Ps have been doing. And so they've, they've got a contract with probation, so they've helped, but the psychiatric evals and most of those are, are sexually driven. Uh, we, there just aren't enough folks doing it, so our, our efforts is trying to find, uh, either resources. Or someone who can come in and get those evals done, uh, because, I mean, a youth that's, they're less than. If, if they, if a youth goes from sixty days there and the eval is done in thirty days, that's saving about six thousand, sixty-three hundred bucks and during the course of a, of a month.
But they, aren't we working with Dr. Pope with it on this?
That's, that's another, that's a, somebody explaining this.
Yeah, that's, Dr. Pope was, uh, part of the Boys Town group, but now she's at Creighton. So her contract also went to Creighton as far as being a probation provider.
Well, this, uh, we've, since when are we officially adjourned?
Officially adjourned?